We'll bring the meeting to work. We have a quorum, I see, so we don't have Brenna and Noah. Amy, you want to do roll call?
Perfect. Just to give you, Noah did email saying he had emergency call out for, so he will not be attending tonight. Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Campbell?
Present.
Counselor Coroner?
I don't.
Here. Oh, there you are. Counselor Cannon?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute everybody.
Let's see here.
Got it.
Okay, it should. Should be able to.
Yeah, I'm here. I can unmute myself now. Thanks.
Counselor Wright?
I'm here.
And Counselor Lynda Meyer?
Present.
Thank you all.
Great, thank you all. Welcome. Welcome to our guests, Sean, Mark, Chris, I see, Colleen. Welcome. First, agenda corrections or additions. Pretty quick agenda tonight. Let's send updates. We can come back and talk about how we're doing meetings, whether we do in person, hybrid, or just Zoom. Obviously, the mayor or I and Andrea and Amy huddled on this and decided we'd do Zoom because of the challenges we've had. But we'll, we'll talk about that during updates. And next meeting, 3 September, Andrea can speak to that. Also, I think Andrea has an update on a power outage planned by Pacific Power coming up later this month. So there's a few things that are. Anything else, other agenda corrections, additions? Any counselors or Andrea? Not going once, going twice. Okay, good. Approval of the July 23 meeting minutes, I looked at them, I thought they were great, Amy. Anyone have any comments, any counselors?
One comment. I just wanted to make sure that the meeting minutes reflected that Acacia Berry is being taken off of the bank account and the CD through the bank. We just needed that to be really clear. They, they ask about that, so we just wanted to make sure that was nice and clear. And I think, I think we got that in there. But that was, that's my only thing.
Okay, thanks Brenna. Any other comments? Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes with Brenna's comment. Anyone wish to so move?
I will second that.
Yeah, I was actually asking for the.
Oh, for a motion? Well, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from, oh gosh, hold on, 7, what was that?
23.
Sorry.
7:23.
Thank you. 7:23, 25.
Good, any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Or Ron, so Ron's, Ron's hand or Gary? Okay, thank you all in favor, raise your hands. Let's, before we speak, let's raise your hand, so I'll call on you. I'll, I'll recognize you to speak when we want to speak. Okay, great. Thank you. Business from the audience. Mark, you're one citizen, I see. Mark, any, anything?
I've been asking, there we go.
Yeah, I, I don't have any business with, I'm pleased with the fact that the gate is closed. And so I'm not too worried about refunding people for the days that it was open. So I, no need for me. And Andrea, I'm gonna mute myself again.
Good, good. Hey, you know, on, on that topic, and, and hooray for Brenna and her team that are doing tokens and dealing with the public that comes in. As we go forward into next year and we talk about what the appropriate pricing level is. Andrea, maybe we can convene a little committee of local users that use the site and get input from folks like Mark and others. We've done that in the past, so just keep that thought going forward. Okay. Thank you. So we'll turn to Chris McHale of Tech with his quarterly report on wastewater and water operations. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I know there were some comments, and I know that Ron, I've, I've done some legwork on a bunch of stuff. And I know that we'll follow up at another time unless you would like to go over some of the light items. I don't want to bogart the, the time allotted for the council and all the business and everything.
No, I, I think it's a good idea to get together when you get back from vacation.
Okay.
And give that a first run in person and then bring forward anything that we need to.
Okay, yeah, I've definitely had staff out there all week and today including, and went through all the generators and stuff. So we got a ton of updates and everything to go over with, yeah.
Right.
I, I would like to highlight, anybody would like to go over any of the items on that. Some of the big stuff is that we have received the majority of all the UV equipment. So we're going through those steps, reaching out to the state, going through and replacing the failing system that's currently in place to keep us in compliance. And we'll be installing that and going through that and then working with the state to make sure that they're happy with the installation and working with RH2, the design engineer, to go through that, so.
Good.
And plants running good outside of that. And we're also trying to get that done in place before the contractor Ajax comes in and we start the major upgrades at the wastewater facility. So we're not, not in their way with both of us working in conjunction to try to modify the system, so. Any, any items specifically that caught anybody's interest that we'd like to go through or talk about on either the, either the systems?
Yeah, Chris, I'll join if you're not gonna walk through, reading your report, thank you, good, good, comprehensive report. The fats, oils, grease. I was like, whoa, that's a felony offense. That, that was kind of surprising to me, and I, maybe that's a good thing. I wonder if that continues to be a problem, if we could fashion some kind of big sign that Brenna would provide space in front of the market that explained, you know, in brief terms, so people will read it, that this is a problem for the wastewater treatment plant and people have to be mindful of what they're putting down their sink. I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but somehow, if that continues to be the problem, we, we gotta, we gotta police that somehow or get, get better word out that this is serious and it can be a felony if we discover people that are doing it. So, so comment on that, is that even a viable idea?
So I talked with Andrea and I talked with, with Amy. And I think our first course of action that we've come up that we suggest maybe to the council is that we're, we're looking at some standard information and language that is presented by DQ, the state, for public outreach and education. And some of those standard best practice methods that could be used for households and for agencies like ourselves that we can put one on the website and then maybe some of the newsletters that go out to the ratepayers, just as general education. What are the impacts? Most people don't think about what I flush, what I put down my garbage disposal, what are the impacts to the final discharge? You know, how do we treat the water, all those things? So we're looking for some of that information that's already pre-canned done by the state as a public outreach that's well documented. And we hope to bring that to you, that way we can include that in some of the pamphlets, mailers, you know, website, things of that nature. We thought that was kind of the first course of action.
Yeah, good.
Open, open to suggestions.
Okay. I see Commissioner Brady's joined us, welcome Commissioner Brady, thanks for joining us. Okay, so more, more to be done on that and how we notice it and get the word out, but that continues to be a problem, I guess. That's what.
And, and one comment, just to circle back on that piece, was we had talked about when, when those sensors are being tripped for whatever the contaminants or the hyper-concentration of whatever the material is that, that's not agreeable or not standard.
Right.
Trying to, in real time, figure out a timing, at least a time, starting with a timeframe to when that event is occurring and if there's any kind of trend, if it's a repeating event. And then if we notice that it, it's hap, if it's happening more than three times, then there's, there's a pattern. And we should, we should start as a city, some sort of task force to at least investigate where the potential drop sites are, whether it's a manhole or something, so.
Well, just bound on that, absolutely. I think we talked too, is that I think initially we've talked about and maybe put in motion resources, talking about marking the manholes. So if somebody was coming in dark, misplaced, and then we could correlate, go back to the dates that we saw that with our graphs, like what was going on. And then, secondly, if my staff sees some type of illegal dumpings and it changes the wastewater characteristics at the plant, I think our next course, it, it may be not as scientific as we want because there's millions of constituents, we don't know what it is. But there's a strong perception that it might be petroleum-based slash paints because of the texture and what we're seeing in the pH change. So if we see that again, we're gonna take samples, and I'm gonna try to run it off at some local analytic labs to see if we can determine it is a petroleum paint base. And then that would help us define what we're looking at. It may or may not be effective, but we think that it's a high likelihood it might be some type of paints that are being dumped. That, that's separate from the discharge at night with solids. So there's two separate dumpings. One is something that changes the pH, the wastewater characteristics coming in the plant, changes the color, it looks like somebody dumping paints. The other is dumping at night with solids, which could be like a septic truck or somebody opening a manhole. So two separate, different scenarios.
Okay, well, you're, you're on it, Chris, not to belabor this point, but good thoughts, Charlie. Other questions, comments on wastewater or?
I've, I've got a question, and it might be a silly question, I don't know. Because I'm assuming that I guess this is just all stuff you're seeing come through the, the plant, right? Like the treatment center. So I was thinking, is there some way to figure out like what part of town it's coming from? Like, and I don't know if that's a thing, again, this might be a silly question, but like, knowing if it's coming from, you know, right here in town or further outside of town, I don't know if there's a way that we monitor the way that the waste is getting into the treatment center. I'm just.
There, there is, absolutely, and that is not silly at all.
Okay.
So how we do that is that we don't have a pump station collection system, it is all gravity. And so what you do is you break it into sections. And then what I'd have to do is bring staff in, we'd have to open up manholes, and we would take sample, samplers, portable samplers, and sample. And then segregate the section, basically eliminate through process elimination where it's coming, and then chase those samplers up to basically final discharge points by households. And it is very lengthy, I've done that through my career. And then, once we get there, the problem that we have is that we don't have a pre-treatment program per se or some type of stick, right? To penalize or go, you know, once, once you know what that discharge point is, what, what is, besides sitting down with the individuals and talking about it, we don't have mechanism to be able to find or go through to make them to conform, right? But we do have that avenue, and so there's a lot to, to look at and to be able to go through it. So it's not simple, but we do have a method to do it if we need to.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Hold, hold on, Colleen, I go to counselors first. If no other counselor questions, comments, at least on this topic. All right, Colleen.
I just wanted to ask if there's possibly anything in the wastewater ordinances that talk about fines or what, what can be done in terms of enforcement? That might be just something to check out.
I mean, ultimately, if, if we don't have anything, you know, in the statutes, I would, I would say is that we can easily look and adopt at maybe some of the surrounding government agencies like Hood River that have spent that time and effort and look at, is that something that you guys want to consider for adoption to be able to use for future growth? It's, it's never easy to go through that process, but it'd be nice to have for protection for everybody.
Yeah, it might be there already. I know we found a couple of things in the water ordinances, so it's.
Yeah, good, good point.
You should just research it.
Good point, Colleen, maybe Andrea, you could take that up and take a look. Okay, let's, I don't want to get too bogged down on this. Chris, Chris, keep going with your report.
Yeah, water looks good, all the tests, both on the wastewater, the water, everything is in compliance. We're up to speed on everything, working with Levi, the certified water operator that we've employed, that we work under. Well number five is moving along and on track. We're also looking at additional funding and grant opportunities for additional infrastructure outside of the well five, maybe for looking at potentially like permanent generators, which I know is on everybody's mind with power outages, things like that. So those are things that we're working on, big picture. I think outside of that, there's nothing that comes to mind, and I'm sorry, I don't have it printed in front of me to go through.
Chris, Chris, for the benefit of the council, we've heard a couple of times from Matthew Kerner, Lydia's great dad, who's been all, all hats, Moser over the years. He has some insights to the water system, you recently met with him. Could you just thumbnail the knowledge exchange you had with him, so we're all familiar?
Absolutely. So I, I met with Matthew, went to his residence, we sat down for a couple hours. Of course, you know, first, first point of emphasis was, he asked me if I want something to drink. So of course I drank the city water to make him feel at ease. And then we, we went through the history and, and kind of the transition between the operators and some of his concerns to make sure things were done correctly from a maintenance operation standpoint. This, just not saying, hey, we're here doing testing and charging you guys, we're really being stewards to the system. And so I was honest with them, is that we're very at the front end of this, and that's a major concern of mine too. So as we go through and develop the valve flushing, the, the exercising of the valves, looking at the maintenance and certification of like the clay valves and the pressure reliefs, I want to put that together and then circle back with him because I really feel he's a great resource with a ton of experience and history. And he absolutely said he, he embraced that open arm. So I'd like to bring that back to him and then talk about that. Because Andrea's kind of tasked me with, how can we optimize the current water contract to make it more efficient from a, a cost standpoint? Is there some of the things like housekeeping and yard maintenance and, and some of the stuff at the sites that maybe somebody else can do and we don't at a higher rate? So we're trying to optimize everything we do, why still maintaining the system the best that we can? So I don't want to pull on all those resources like Matthew and say, do you think this is overkill or not enough? And address his concerns. Then I had Levi and staff meet with him separately and they actually walked some of the systems, like the pressure relief valves and stuff. So it's an ongoing process in working with him to make sure that it has his blessing before I bring that back to the city and, and talk about it.
Great, thank you, and thank you for the point on optimizing how we use our financial resources. I know Andrea's working with you on that, so thank you for that. Okay, other, other points you want to make? I, you know, one thing, I, I liked your report, it's concise and to the point, and, you know, it's not too much for all of us to read, so thank you for that. Questions, comments, thoughts, counselors? If not, Chris, anything else?
Not off the top of my head, no.
You mentioned the, the well project, Colleen's kind of Uber PM on that. She just was out there, what, yesterday, Colleen, with EPA representatives regarding the $500,000 CDS funds we got on that. And that project's going well, the contractor Ajax, everything's gone smoothly. So Colleen, any, anything else to say about that? The, the driller's gonna be in here in the next couple of weeks and starting to punch the hole, so fingers crossed. Colleen?
Yeah, the archaeologists will be out there for the first dig to check and see if there are going to be any collections that need to happen. But other than that, if that gets cleared pretty quickly, it'd probably take a day or two. And then the driller will just keep working with GSI, the hydrogeologist, and make sure that it's going straight down and into the deeper aquifer.
Yeah, just one, one point of awareness, something that Chris and Colleen, Levi, others will be working, when they, I mean, get down a certain depth of the well, there's gonna be artesian pressure that we have in well four. And it's gonna take a tricky operation to balance the, the water storage in our three reservoirs such that we're not creating a lot of erosion out there going into Moser Creek. So people are on it, Ajax is on it, RH2's on it, Colleen's on it, Chris is on it. So it'll, it'll be an interesting challenge when they get to that, that point.
Yeah, Levi will need to be out there during that time.
Okay, yeah. Well, and I think some of the things that Ron brought up, we, we need to get our hands around and address, especially before we have pressure issues. With the current, there are some questions now, we, we'd like to get those put to bed before we get into that next phase.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate for you guys to come to. We have a, a project meeting every other week on Wednesdays. And I'll send you an invite, invite around the time that it looks like we're gonna be discussing those issues.
Okay.
Ron, go ahead, you got your hand raised?
So when we were out at the well inspection the other day, something I thought I heard that I wanted to check on. Is it, my understanding that we don't have funding to put a building around well five?
You know, it was never planned to put a, a full building around it. What we were discussing was there are, we're gonna be putting a concrete pad and possibly if there's funding, it's like a cap structure over the wellhead. And that's mostly for insulation. And if we don't have the funding to put that cap structure on, which would be the most lasting thing to do, we're, we're gonna be wrapping it until we have the funding to put that cap structure on it. And it's, it's like a, a hinged lid that's very tall, that you can just open up so that you can get in there for repairs. But we're gonna definitely put the concrete pad there.
I, I, the, the idea of wrapping is concerning to me in the middle of winter. It wouldn't be if there was normally flow, water flow through there, because that would keep it warm. And if it's actually static, and I, I would be worried that it would still freeze even with, unless there was some heaters, heater tape in there or something. Anyway, hope, hope we address that issue before winter comes.
Yeah, actually, I was the one that brought up the need for one of the caps over it because I felt the same way, Counselor Wright. It seems to me that just wrapping it isn't enough in our climate. But we'll, we'll definitely, at the heat tape, we spoke with Levi, he was on our, he's our water operator. He was on our call when we were discussing this issue. And he said that the heat tape typically fails in his experience. So we decided not to do that. He said that he has seen many of these wells wrapped really well, and that's successful for at least one or two seasons. It just has to be redone fairly often, if that's all you do. But it can be successful for one or two seasons at least. So we just need the funding, we just need to make sure that we have the contingency funding for it, to put that cap structure over it.
Sounds like you're all over it.
Yeah.
If worse comes to worse, we'll have to find money out of our budget later, it shouldn't be that expensive. Gary, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Just one, one clarification. Wasn't there supposed to be some, some, the beginnings of some drilling tomorrow on that site as well? Some type of?
Hang on, I, I thought it was gonna be next week, let me, hang on, let me pull up the schedule.
Yeah, the next, next step is the archaeology.
I thought something was happening tomorrow that you wanted someone out there, and I thought it was test drilling or something like that.
Um.
On the south.
I don't think it's tomorrow, just a minute, I'm, I would have had this file up if I'd known we were gonna talk about it, but hang on a second. USDA Water.
For the rest of you counselors, Gary and Ron and me, to some extent, have been eyes and ears to help oversee what's going on, taking pictures out there, so we document the record for RH2 and for our records. That's why Gary's asking, because we've been sharing responsibilities. Colleen, if you don't find it, can we follow up afterwards instead of taking time now?
Yeah, definitely. It looks like they may be out there on the 11th to start drilling. They're, they were mobilizing a little bit yesterday. Or possibly tomorrow to get all their equipment out there. But it looks like the 11th is when the drilling, they're gonna do the upper bore hole.
Okay, I may have misread my email on that.
Okay, very good. Free, you, you can communicate like you have been, Colleen.
Okay.
Chris, I'm gonna turn back to you, any final comments on your report?
No, I forever hold my peace.
Okay, I'm just giving one second for any more questions, comments. Good, Chris, thanks very much, and thank you for your work. We truly appreciate you being in our, on our team to operate the system, digging us out of a, a hole that our former operators left us in, so thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. Let's see, Colleen or Andrea, do you want to introduce Sean Bailey and the topic of the NHMP and where we are in that? And Sean, welcome. Is that you, Colleen, or?
Hi.
I think it's Andrea.
Hi. Yeah, we, this project, I, I did talk to Colleen about it briefly. She did attend a few minute, a few meetings, but Jamie Bennett was, you know, primarily the person involved in helping to develop, along with the, the team of the Wasco County Planning Division, to develop this hazard mitigation plan and the amendment in particular. So I'm going to turn this over to Sean, Sean B. to introduce himself and tell us more about the, the process. And the intention of this is to pass a resolution to adopt these documents.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get going, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you all for having me. And for the record, Sean Bailey, Senior Planner, Wasco County Planning. And Andrea's correct, I did mainly work with Jamie on this, as well as Kerry Pippenage helped out for a lot of the grant writing, or just having a background in grant writing. And then I think, is it former fire chief Michael Carlson now? I think he also, those are the two I helped directly. But anyway, I will share my screen. I think this is the one. All right, can everyone see? The planning department, all right. Thank you, so this project kind of wound down, right? As Andrea and Colleen came over, I think our draft had already been finalized for Moser, essentially, by the time Jamie had left. And then it is, takes so long for all the reviews of the higher up agencies at the state and then at FEMA. And it has now been approved, and now just the adoption portion. Daniel put together this slideshow, but he wasn't able to make it this week, so I'll be taking over. So it's Sean, not Daniel, as this says. And then a quick agenda, we'll just go over what is and why develop an NHMP, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. And then just a roadmap to the process, essentially, how that happened, how the plan came together and risk assessments. Risk assessments, big part of it at the county level was the update from 2019 to 2024. Part of the plans is you do need to update every five years. And then the execution and sustainment of that plan throughout the process. Um. Basically, from uh, implic- implementation and maintenance like ongoing after has been adopted. Um, but the background roughly is in nineteen eighty eight at the federal level, um. The uh, Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistant Act was passed, the Stafford Act. This essentially paved the way for FEMA and at the federal level funding to go into a lot of projects. That essentially local agencies or jurisdictions didn't have the funds for. Um, primarily for disaster relief and mitigation, as we all know, natural disasters can be very expensive. So they started to look at, well, how at the federal level can we help that? And then over time that got adjusted and then two thousand, they did an update, the Disaster Mitigation Act. Um, that essentially called for all of these jurisdictions to have a plan. Um, they didn't want to just uh. Essentially be throwing money out without uh, the local government actually having a plan for these funds. They're not just working on the fly, essentially. Um, they'd like to see how are these funds going to be used, what would they be going for specifically, um, much more day. I'd say modern day grant writing things. Um. But that is uh, essentially what's led us up to now, um, twenty nineteen was the last county. Um, update um, before now, um, and at that time, the DOWS was the only um. City involved, um, and then over the next few years, it um. As you guys all know, I'm not sure who on the city council at the time was involved. But it was decided to um, join. Your city under the umbrella of Wasco County. Um, as the DOWS and now Doofur and Mopin did join as well. Um. Part of this, why we do have it is the state and a lot of planning within Oregon. Um, a lot of the language is uh, the same as essentially what FEMA has called for in these mitigation plans. The point of planning along with this mitigation is. For the to reduce loss of life and property by lessening the impact of disasters through risk analysis. And a lot of planning at the state level is involved to that. So the state adopted within their planning goals, a lot of similar language. And then Wasco County, because of the similar language, it is. In our natural hazard mitigation plan now, as well as within the Wasco County Comprehensive Plan for our plan. It specifically states our policies are. To be in line with FEMA's natural hazard mitigation plans. Um. As well as things like being involved in the FEMA flood protection, that is now. Within our comp plan and a requirement under the mitigation plan. So a lot of these different master plans sort of tie to. Tie together, um, essentially, they all say you need to be a part of the other one at this point. Um, but we are now as a part of our master plan and comprehensive plan for the county. Sort of required to be involved with it and to follow through the with the steps to stay um, up to current standard. And that is the five year update. Um. The what and why to develop the NHMP, this is not our um. Uh, visual, but it basically sums it up that we've used from the. Oregon Partnership for Disaster Resilience, um, and then uh, essentially, part of it is the natural hazard portion. Um, we know what types of natural hazards are and basically vulnerable systems to your guys' city. On the other side of this, and essentially the risk of disaster. Falls into the middle in this Venn diagram, and that is essentially why we have a natural disaster mitigation plan. Um, it is essentially as you've recognized issues that your city might have towards natural disasters. You already have thoughts of maybe how can we? Be better prepared in the future with funding or having a plan of how you could potentially make those happen. Um, the plan was developed over, I think we officially started in twenty twenty three. Just because um, we had had so much turnover within our department between the twenty nineteen. And the twenty twenty four update. Um, only my directors were involved, um, and there was so much turnover. That they wanted to start early and then on top of that, we've added in the new jurisdictions, which. Um. Definitely expanded the report, um. But it has been an ongoing process since uh, early twenty twenty three. Um, a lot of coordination at that point, but we do have quarterly steering committees throughout the entire process. That I'll get into, but this was an ongoing plan that really has come together over a year and a half. Um, I think our draft was sent out last fall. And then it even took, you know, s- over six months of different reviews, higher ups before that was essentially. We were given the green light to move forward. Um, this is uh, again, not our graphic, but another one that does sum up essentially what our plan is. Through um, updating and keeping this mitigation plan going. Um, a lot of it is just how to organize the resources that you have. Um, assessing risk, mitigation goals and actions for those risks. How to eventually implement those actions and maintenance for some of those different plans. Um. As you know, it's not just always a one time fix, it's an ongoing thing. And so that is also part of it, not only do you get the initial funding upfront, can you sustain it over time? Um, final plan preparation and then eventually the implementation of the plan. Um, the process, I know that probably looks small, but um, this is our general steering committee. Not all of the names are current as. This is a primarily a list from last year as we put this plan together. But um, Wasco County Planning, the Dow City Planning, um, Moser City Managers and then Doofur. And Mopin joined as well, um, local fire agencies. Um, Public Works, um, a lot of different agencies. We have quarterly meetings as this plan was put together, that became monthly. Um. And uh, that because of. How broad this was, I mean, the final. Um, report was over eight hundred pages, um, Moser's version was, I believe, ninety seven. So it's a lot, um, so we even broke down into subcommittees. Um, because there was other updates um, that were needed. Um, FEMA put together, but also on top of the new jurisdictions. We broke out into subcommittees, including an outreach subcommittee. Um, because public participation is required as part of it as it should be. Um, data gathering information as um, basically what's different from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four. Um, and then um, a subcommittee for the newly incorporated uh, communities joining. So that one was um, Jamie, Kerry Pippinage, um, representatives from Doofur as well as Mopin. Um. And oh, that was my next slide. Um, the, as I said, the outreach is required through FEMA. Um, one thing we are very proud of was um. How much more direct involvement we did have from the public. Um, in this update versus twenty nineteen. Um. But that was a a major thing because well, part of it, we were allowed to. Put some of the funds part that fall into the grant as public outreach events, they did allow some funds to go towards that, which did help out. Um, data gathering, the big difference was we luckily had the twenty twenty census. So all of that information came out, definitely helped um, us update a lot of our. Um, different sections, primarily especially with the new communities, um, finding out a lot of information and filling in for Moser where it hadn't been before. As well as the American uh, community um, censuses that go on. Um, those were a big help just for updating data from the twenty nineteen. And then obviously, the other subcommittee was um, adding Moser, Doofur and Mopin. The DOWS has been doing it long enough and. They have the resources and planning team to basically run it their portion themselves. Um, but they still coordinate with us as there are um, other FEMA requirements, we need to make sure everybody's. Um, individual um, addendums all meet the same format. To fit into our overall report for the county, so um, a lot of coordination goes into that. Um, one of the big differences um, as well from. The previous one, obviously, Moser fell under the umbrella for the county. Um, but one of the biggest differences, we did add a new natural hazard, um, we recognized extreme heat. Um, we broke that off as a new um. Specific natural hazard, um, we were guided that way because it turns out there's a a. More funding at the federal level. For um, renovations of old buildings, especially HVAC. So um, separating extreme heat and making that its own natural hazard. Was um, one big push uh. That we did follow because uh, they just felt that that was going to be making it more obvious and easy to get funding. For things um, due to extreme heat. Um, public outreach. Um, this one is big because obviously um. We all do planning or involved in local government as everyone is here. Um, but getting that direct public input um, to make sure that it's not just insular speaking. Um. Is very big, and so um, part of that as required is you are required to host um, public speaking events. Or just public o- events open. To the public and um. We marketed around the county um, as well as within Moser. Um. Local media and radio was involved. Um, Columbia Gorge News. Um, as well as um, Facebook groups, um, Columbia Community Connections and other things like that. Um, that is one thing we do think the advancement of that even from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four really helped with public input. Um, and as well as being involved in local advance, um, that was one of the other big things. Um, they did as well with Moser, I believe it was twenty twenty four. They were involved in one of your guys' fire update meetings. Um, as well as Saturday market, I believe they had booths and just information. We had um, flyers with a survey. Um, that was our biggest thing, we had a digital survey that was able to basically get a lot more quick information. Um. Versus the survey and how they uh, presented it to the public in twenty nineteen. Um, we also were more involved in established meetings with the local jurisdictions, including um, city council meetings. For the different uh, new um, jurisdictions that were joining. Um, the biggest difference uh, from this twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four survey. Um, there wasn't a lot of outreach involved at the time, um, from what I understand, they didn't have as much direct help. So the people sort of. Didn't put as much time and effort onto that, they still did host an event that had um. I believe only eight people participate. Um. But they did uh, their survey was also very in depth and large with very long questions, we shortened ours. Um, including demographics, we added, but we had larger outreach, um, last time they had eight respondents. Um, and in this time, we had six hundred and thirty nine respondents. Um, we actually had over a thousand, but um, we had to eliminate. Um, junk and bots, there was um, some spam we did receive. So we are fairly confident that um, at least six hundred of those responses were legitimate, um. We were flooded with some spam though, because part of our strategy was a ten dollar gift card for people who. Who did respond to ours, so that opened up to a lot of spam and um. Contact from people out of the country and the area. Um. And then um, our big thing we did. Um. Was preparing for a movie disaster marathon. Um, they, we took the idea from twenty nineteen, they did a disasters and donuts movie marathon. But it was just at the planning department, um, and they had a projector. And like I said, eight people showed up, they didn't really advertise it. Um. And this time, we actually had funding and I don't know if you guys went to it or remember it at all, but we did it at the movie theater in the DOWS. While it was still open, um, and we did it uh, over an entire day. I think that part of the downfall was we did it on spring break, we didn't think about when we planned it. We still had over a hundred attendees, but we do think that. Did cut off especially on some number of families, um. But we did have a quite a few people come in, a lot of surveys were done directly, it was just disaster movies. Um, things like that. Um, but it was a good way to get a lot of public input, we had a lot of other agencies at this event. Um, that, you know, just Fire McPhir was there, um, I think. Moser Fire stopped by briefly, we had a lot of different agencies, some with booths and tables. Um, swag to give out for people as well, um. But it was a, no, it was very nice, it was a good public event, um. That's just a rough overview of what we did. Um, we had direct QR codes for the uh, surveys at the event. That was another thing they didn't utilize in twenty nineteen that really helped, um. And other outreach events we did. Oh, this right, this wasn't Moser Grange last March. Um, other for uh, Royal Fire Protection District Updates. Uh, Mopin Days, Wasco County Fair, um, we tried Doofur Threshingby, but theirs was too late within the process. We had to have our um, reports done by the time they actually hosted that. Um, but the outreach and public uh, survey did give us some vital information, especially just showing what. What type of disasters do the public think are the main concern locally versus nationally? Um, different cities answer differently, um. You know, it was just um, good to get general information from the public, um, and we did. Add a location factor, so within the county, we were able to track. How did people from Moser area answer specifically? Um, because they hired an outside um, survey firm that does a lot of data compiling and so it was. Much more useful information we got back from the survey using that. Um. And then we used the raffle, other things, gift card, um, we had speakers available for winning, so we did get a lot of um, input. Um, one thing as uh, the cities, the big thing that. Separates them from Wasco County. Um, is you start to look at the general ge- geography of the towns and what, how those natural disasters will. Affect them specifically, um, the county has a rating we did. Um, the steering committee votes and I'll show you those slides soon. Um, but then we also had the cities give us their input of what. How they felt theirs uh, was going to be. What they decided was more important than other disasters. Um. This is Wasco County's total public. Um, numbers, we used a lot of census data, that is one thing that was good for us versus twenty nineteen where they were coming in right before a census. There's still other surveys they were able to use, but we had a lot more more recent data available. Um. That just helps show growth and especially numbers. Plus, the census was good for um, vulnerable populations, elderly. Um. migrant worker information, things like that. That was very important for building a community profile, which is part of. The plan, we build the counties and then we had to build profiles for the communities as well. The DOWS, you know, and Wasco County, a lot of that is modifying from the previous profiles, but we had to create new profiles. Or Moser, Doofur and Mopin. Um, and that includes things like housing, um, when we think of. Um, natural disasters and how they can affect an area, um, well, how old are the houses in the area? That's part of it, especially with things like heat or um, we know earthquake, um. That how those can affect older buildings versus new, not that that's something that's not. A necessarily local concern, but those type of factors when you look at housing age, um. Moser, a lot of it is built, been built since, um. Mozier, a lot of it is built, been built since um the nineties. Essentially sixty percent of Mozier's houses have been built um since nineteen ninety. Um, you can see the cutoff of information was essentially twenty twenty, not that there's been no new houses in Mozier since twenty twenty, just um the availability of data and what we can use. Um. This was the critical infrastructure that was provided by the city of Mozier. Um. Granted, this is again for the twenty twenty four update. Now that we have the initial plan for the cities, I think it's going to be much easier to expand and refine as needed going forward. Um, a lot of it was building the initial plan for you guys, getting your initial risk assessments in and then going from there, moving forward. But um this is what was identified from Mozier as critical facilities. I don't have the specifics here. Um, I think those are in your guys' um community profile. Um, and then these are the same for the county, but these were the hazards that were ranked. Um, the county does theirs, I'll show, but this is all the natural hazards that we went with for um local to Wasco County. Um, there used to be tornado separated. We added it to ex- severe weather. Because there's not been a tornado within Wasco County and we created extreme heat. Um, as that has been more of a growing issue since twenty nineteen. And as I said, funding, um, earlier funding availability. Um. It was a smart decision to separate that. Um, the risk assessments, how we build those is analyzing hazards to the local community. Discuss vulnerabilities specific to that local community. Mozier's geography um is much different than Mopins. So that is where we had to go in and everyone ranked there separately. Um, based on their local communities and how they felt what, where they're more vulnerable. Um, and we ranked them. Um, here's how we did it for Wasco County. This is essentially our final scorecard. Um, I don't have exactly how we broke it down. That is in our plan, but we essentially came up with our own rating system. How devastating would this wild or um this natural hazard be to the local community? How often does it occur? Things like that. We came up with a scoring system. This was Wasco Counties. Um, we determined that wildland wildfire, extreme heat and drought were the highest concern. Um, severe weather, storms, winter weather, floods were medium, and then earthquake, volcano, and landslides were low. Um, Mozier, this is how uh you guys presented yours to us. Um, again, I'm not entirely sure who was involved or not um currently, but this is what was given to us. Um. Wildland wildfires, severe weather, extreme heat and drought were high. And then flood, landslide, earthquake, and volcano were low. Um, and then just some general specific details there of the how and why. Plan im- implementation and maintenance comes in after this. Now that you've essentially ranked your hazards and identified where you think your community is specifically vulnerable, you can start to create plans to um try to um fix this or uh get funding to help with this. And then how are you going to going to implement that plan? And how is there going to be maintenance on the plan over time? Sometimes it is just this park is broken or si- part is broken or city well, we need a new one. And it's just getting funding for that. Other times it's, you know, I think we need uh a full position of someone that um, clear snow in the winter, and now that's a job and equipment. And how are you going to maintain that over time? Um, as they broke down all of their uh action items. Um, all of those are split with an abbreviation. Is it a multi-hazard issue? Meaning, is this a type of um hazard that can pertain to multiple hazards? Is it just drought specific? Is it earthquake specific, flood, landslide? That is what this code means um essentially, and Mozier, this is just page one. I think you guys had six pages that looked like this. This is how we um have tables within our um plan that show your guys' specific issues, the proposed action item, coordinating, coordinating organizations, partnering organizations, who could possibly help with this? Or who, who can you coordinate with? And um how does it fall in line with FEMA's plan goals of protection of life and property? Emergency services enhancement, education and outreach. And idea, which is um replaced DEI, um, it's inclusion, diversity, equity. And um ooh, accessibility, excuse me, I almost forgot it. Um, and again, this is from twenty twenty four, so um I'm not sure what the future of that will look like with FEMA. Um, within the last year and a half, it's um, there's been a lot of question marks at the national level. But um our plan is now implemented and twenty twenty nine's update might look very different than the twenty twenty four one. Um, if within your guys' addendum, there's I think six pages of the different action items. I wasn't going to go through all of them. This is just essentially um how we do them. It's a tracker. FEMA likes this specific layout, um, so that is why we followed this. Um, and then all of these action items then have a specific mitigation action item later that looks like this. This is an example of one of yours. Um, funding for an emergency water storage supply in excess of five thousand gallons. This is one of those that was um listed from Mozier Fire. So this is how these are laid out within your addendum at the end. Um. They go pages sixty-nine through ninety-seven of your guys' addendum. Um, again, now that you guys are new to this and have been um involved in the process, you can expand on this in the future. Um. But this is, uh, I think we finalized yours essentially August twenty twenty four. Um, so some of the information might seem out of date or old. Um, from what's happened in the last year, but that is essentially the, sorry, not the quickest rundown. Um, as I said, it is a over eight hundred page report that we had to prepare. Um, and your guys' specific addendum is ninety-seven pages. Um. I hope that wasn't too much information, uh, but is that, is there any questions or anything you guys like to discuss?
Sean, thank, thank you very much. I'll start. We'll do a round of questions, comments before we get to entertaining a motion to adopt the, the plan, the addendum. Hey, fir- first I want to say that was a great briefing. I think it reflects the professionalism and the detail and the comprehensiveness of the plan itself. I've spent a little time with it, and I just want to say kudos to you and Daniel and Sheridan and staff from Mozier and the county. And I'll, I'll just remark for council's benefit, some of us weren't around two years ago, but some of us will recall, we were on a path to do our own NHMP, and after discussion with the county and others, decided no, it'd be better to join forces and do the multi jurisdiction plan, which this is, and I think we're better for it. I think we probably have a better product, and I think maybe it came at less cost to us, you know, in terms of our staff time, so just pass on our, our thanks to the team that developed this. Very, very good. I would say the hazards, I think, are about right. I think the mitigation action lists are about right. Uh, so I, I, I just, I feel really good, good about this and the fact, as you say, we can modify it going forward. I do, one, one very specific kind of minor thing, as I went through the plan and the addendum. The, the item on your very last slide that showed five thousand gallons plus up in Seven Mile Hill. It, I was a little confused because it looked like that was a city of Mozier lead action. And Mozier Fire would be a partner, whereas to me that's outside our jurisdiction and mission responsibility in the city. It, it should be a fire district lead with support from Mozier, but that, that's, you know, it's a kind of a minor detail. But I, I think really the goodness, as you mentioned and Andrew mentioned, this sets us up for potential funding streams in the future. Depending, as you said, what happens in the federal, federal government world. But uh, anyway, I, I'm, I'm super pleased with it and think, think you guys did a great job. So with that, let me, let me turn it over to other counselors. Questions, comments? Uh, any thoughts before we, we entertain a motion? Charlie, go ahead.
Oh, just, just a couple of things. Uh, one was I noticed in the um in what Mozier had as far as resources, it mentioned that we had a fuel station, which is inaccurate.
I think that's the county yard.
Okay.
That's out, Station Twelve, Charlie.
Okay, so that's what that was. Okay, just, just.
I believe.
I do believe it is, yeah, everything that might fall within city limits for you guys, and maybe not necessarily the city governments or something like that. As far as I know, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, and then the other was randomly I was, I got called, and this is just a comment, just sort of to push this piece to whatever avenues you have, Sean. But I randomly was on a, I got invited on that Helfrich call yesterday that um our state representative had to hear feedback and I I, I posed the question, but it didn't, the woman didn't interpret it correctly. And that was with some of these hazards, and we've talked about this in council, pertaining to wildfires. The, the classification to which wildfires are when we determine the cause of wildfires. The, there's a, there's a, there's a um classification that's just human caused. And that is not very specific. Human cause could be electrical, could be railroad. It could be somebody with a firework. And my, my question to Helfrich and my question to sort of investigate as far as hazards and our number one hazard that is affected and will continue to affect with heavy heat and wildfires. Um, it's important that if we look at our wildfires, a lot of them are happening in and around uh places, whether it's railroads or neighboring highways and some sort of collaboration with anywhere where there is a lot of activity with potential sparking, what, what's being looked at on a federal and then state and local community level to address roadways, railways, uh being the, but to try and ascertain, to figure out what where, where the most fires are coming from specifically. Because a lot of them are coming in and around railways or roadways. And what, what could be done, whether it's rock and weed kill or something, long-term solution to if, if a spark or a cigarette or something is coming from you know, those, those, those pieces, something to start looking at where, where the fires are coming from generally, and what steps could be taken to mitigate that in the future.
I wouldn't be able to answer specifics, uh, but we do have a new fire safety coordinator that was part of a separate grant. Um, similar to the National Hazard uh Mitigation Plan. Um, but that was when we got through the Forest Service and that person specifically being used to um coordinate with wildfires in the area. South County specifically because of the lack of resources um down there versus in the north. Um. And I know, I guess at the state level with that map, they just created but then didn't use, um, I can't say specifically, but that is something in your updates for future. You guys actually could add specifics or try to fit that under some of the umbrella of your um, risks assessments that you've come up with. That is kind of why it is good to have these sort of things. You you know, it's, uh, if you've done grant work, um, they want some specifics, and sometimes there's a little more wiggle room to fit um, under the umbrella of a grant. Um, we just did some updates to our um, geologic hazard overlay, so for landslides within Wasco County through Dogami. And we use that as we got grant money through that, through our natural hazard mitigation. And that was a pretty broad one in twenty nineteen. It just kind of said, look at and update. Um, essentially our current overlay zone, and they were able to use that um to start to get funding for that, and they were able to uh remap with Dogami. Um. Uh, I don't think it was the entire county, but a large portion of the county, they were able to get updated landslide maps. Um. That I think are going to be adopted soon, but um, I would say that is all I could say specifically. My directors might know a little more, especially if that was a call yesterday, but that's a very good point. Looking at the uh, the fires and where they've been, especially this year, and I agree, the um, human caused is not, it, yeah.
Jump, jump in, Charlie, Charlie is an example that which comes at a cost, but a good example, I think, is all the work being done in the electrical grid. For example, Pacific Power, you see around town where they clear below the poles with transformers. This thing that Andrew will update us on, the, the power outage, it's going to come up is for hardening one of their distribution lines. A lot of that is generated by the need to mitigate or reduce the potential for fires and you know, as a volunteer in Mozier, I've been on several electrical caused fires. Again, as you say, human cause. All right, other, other questions, comments for Sean counselors before we get to a resolution? Ron, is your hand up? Or is that, no, no, I guess not. Any, any thoughts? Eh, everybody's looked at, skimmed through the plan, looked at the mitigation items. It's a long long, pretty exhaustive list of mitigation items, and you look at it and you go, oh my gosh. Mozier's work is never going to be done, but it's, you know, it's a start. It's a place, maybe, maybe we can derive some funding for some of these actions. Other thoughts? Well, Sean, again, thank you. Ron, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, it, it is just a, a little concerning to how long the list is and how uh, difficult some of those items look. And so it is that the primary avenue to implement these is to look for funding to be able to do that?
That is as, uh, as far as I know, basically FEMA likes to see more of a square plan. Um, and so it just does open up for the availability of other funds. Um, that's not the only purpose. I mean, some of it is just local coordination. We've recognized this um, concern, so we, we at the local level, this is what we're doing. So it is not just about getting um more funds from a higher up government agency. Um. But it is just having local coordinations. Our steering committee um is quarterly. Um, and then monthly as we went through the process, but some of those meetings are fast, but we do go through our list um and talk about updates, because some of them are specific. Um, we had a couple that are like even GIS updates and plans of how could we make the GIS um, better. That is specific things that our Wasco County GIS team gets funding from and they work on, and we, at our steering committees, they'll go through, this is what we've worked on, this is what we've improved. And we will remove um issues as they are done. So it is an ongoing thing after the plan, um, because that is part of what FEMA does. It's not, you just threw this plan together to get funding, and then it's just this eight hundred and fifty page document that sits in a binder. Um, you know, I mean, that would be very annoying for me as someone who helped write it. Um, but it does, um, we do keep coordinating um after the fact. Um, not everyone can go to every meeting. We, it's a lot of people from a lot of different agencies. But people are there and we do give updates. This is what we've been working on. Um. Sometime just identifying that there is a risk when you are talking with different agencies. That just gets, oh, we could help with that.
Even, even, yeah, community awareness, you know.
Yeah.
Assuming we adopt this, Andrew and Amy, we'll get the link posted on our website to you know, that we think about these things, not that we can solve all of them. Okay, well, if there's no other questions or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion. Amy's got in the chat, a suggestion, most motion, would anyone like to so move? So move. Ron, great.
Uh, I moved to adopt the City of Moser addendum to the Wasco County Multi-Jurisdictional. Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan.
Do we, do we need to, to reference the resolution? Yeah, Colleen shaking her head, yes, the resolution that uh.
Oh.
Laura amended that Colleen had drafted.
Yeah, do you have a copy of it in front of you, Whit?
Um, uh, yes, I do.
So what do we need to do?
I think if the, if Amy's um. Res, uh, her motion suggestion is the same as the title to the resolution, I think that would be.
Yes.
Fine.
Is that good, Amy? It is the same? And it, and it's adopting the plan and the addendum, is that right?
Uh, that is, that is exactly the uh, title of the um, resolution itself.
Good, okay. Okay, so, so Ron, thank you. You got it right. Sorry to question. Uh, any discussion? If not, uh, someone want to make a second?
I'll second that.
Brenna, seconds, all in favor? Raising hands for all in favor? Great, thank you. Again, Sean, pass on our thanks to the team, a lot of work. You know, I was a government guy in my career, did a lot of things like this and I just, I'm impressed with the professionalism and. And uh, comprehensive work you done, you got all of done, so very good.
No, and thank you all for having me.
Thanks. You're welcome to stay, we'll, we'll, if you like, but we're going to wrap up soon here. Okay, great work. Glad to see that product done. That's good for the City of Moser. Okay, uh, we're on to city updates. Before we get there, Commissioner Brady. You got in a little late, I didn't give you a chance to make any comments, anything that you'd like to offer to the council?
Not in particular, um, we're working on, moving forward on phase two of cleanup in the Rowena project. Phase two is. To, but phase one is um, DQ pulling out uh, toxic items, then, then interim time when. Owners can go back in and recover uh, personal items and then phase two is scraping the ground. To move all, all, everything so people can start from fresh. We're running into question of who's going to pay for that and so that, we hope to get that resolved and so people can get back. Um, we've had discussions on with the scenic area about. Expediting the process and we're going to be following up on that. It was said at the scenic area leaders um, told us that they can follow an expedite process as we looked into it. It's, it wasn't much of expeditiousness. So we're, we're going to be going to them and, and asking for something that's really truly. Um, it will give people a quicker access back to, to permit process.
Good. Thank you, thank you for attending. Jane, I know you had trouble getting on the call. Did you want to make any comment at the public comment point at the beginning of the meeting?
Um, oh, uh, appreciated, Whit. Uh, no, I was just trying to be here, actually. I have a question, I, I can, it's not urgent, so thank you.
Yeah, follow up with Andrea or me, whoever's appropriate, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, updates, uh, let, let's talk a little bit about, we, we went to a Zoom meeting, so. You know, given the challenges we've had with our hardware capabilities and meeting in the senior center. I mean, a couple of things are obvious. One, we try and project. Slides on the wall and you can't see it because we can't make the room dark and then nobody on the, that's dialing in can see it either. Two, we can't all turn our computers or laptop or PCs or iPads on because we exceed the. The bandwidth there that Todd provides to the senior center, so that's a problem. Three, we can't see who's participating from the public virtually versus, you know, in the room. Ideally, meeting in person, you know, I think is better. But because of those challenges, Andrea and Amy, I decided, let's, let's go back. To a virtual meeting like this and see how it goes. And maybe at such time as we improve our hardware technical capacities. And, you know, so we can meet the needs of those that are virtual, those in the room, you know, we, we do it this way. I would submit, even though I'd, I'd like to meet in person, I would submit. These, these Zoom meetings work really well. I think they're disciplined. They're, you know, we can see what's projected, we can screen share, we can see chats in the. In the side column while we're going through, so I, I mean, I think it works pretty well. The state law.
Can I ask a question?
Jane, Jane, hold please, please, just a second while I'm speaking.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll give you a chance to ask a question. The, the law during COVID was that. You, to the extent, I wrote it down, to the extent reasonably possible. We are to offer the public the ability to access and attend meetings electronically and submit testimony virtually. And so, you know, this, this is one way we're, we're doing it this way. It, it can work. Now, granted, there may be some bugs to iron out in doing this, but anyway, I would. Encourage any discussion from counselors uh, on this topic. What's your preference? I know before we said we'd like to meet in person, but it, from my perspective, it just hasn't worked and I think it's stressful for Andrea, stressful for Amy. Keeping those meetings going when we're doing that in, in-person session at the senior center. So let me stop there. Um, and see counselors, and Jane, I'll come back to you. Counselors, what are your thoughts? Brenna?
Oh, um, I'm always in favor of in-person meetings, however, tonight went. Very smoothly, it felt really quick and efficient and um, yeah, I think, I think it kept us really on track and everybody could see everything. So as much as I love in-person meetings, until we are sure we can get, you know, our, our technical stuff figured out. This seems like a good option.
Okay, other thoughts? Lydia?
Um, much as I enjoyed this meeting going really smoothly, um. Is there a possibility or a way that we could do like an open call to community members? Who are remote employees who do work with. Like video software systems and um, being able to run. Team meeting, hybrid team meetings, like I think it would be great for us to be able to have meetings like this in person, but I do think that. There are probably untapped community members who would be able to provide us with a lot of technical assistance, just to like help us. Get up and running again, so that's my thought on that.
And, Andrea, do you want to respond? You're on mute.
I, um, you know, I, I agree that looking for a solution for hybrid meetings is the best way to go. But there's also many cities that strictly do in, um, Zoom meetings as, as Amy has done some research. And that's really why, you know, we're, we're having this conversation. I think our small community really does like to come in person. Um, but it comes back to that efficiency, um, and uh, you know, quality of the meeting. That, you know, we're really trying to understand and to speak to, to Lydia, we are looking for um, support. And equipment to be able to run better hybrid meetings.
Charlie?
Um, I, I've attended a handful of the Port of Hood Rivers meetings and they do the hybrid model. And whatever systems they have, they, you know, they have an official. Meeting room with speakers and AV equipment, but whatever. They, they would, uh, and I have a meeting with them in the coming weeks, um. But they, their systems, their meetings run really smooth, so as a, as a resource, you could reach out to the port and I'm sure they gladly. Let you know what systems they use, et cetera.
And, and uh, part of the issue was, is that we have to set up every, every meeting. Um, and that creates some challenges, so you know, finding a solution to have a permanent, like you said, the, the screen and. You know, so those are things that we're considering.
Yeah, we, we'd have to have a very large TV screen. If we, you know, we, senior centers are a place to meet now. We, we are in better terms with the, the uh.
What is the, what's the relationship with the senior center? As far as, could they give us a storage area so we don't have to transport things at least?
Storage in the building is very minimal and, and Amy and I plan to reach out to uh, the manager there to talk to them about. You know, the possibility of um, permanently installing a large screen.
Okay. Yeah, the other, I was going to say the Grange, where the Grange is, we're in better graces with the Grange now and. You know, that room, I think you can get darker, so maybe projection there. So that's a possibility to explore, Andrea. But, but the senior center is a problem unless you're meeting when it's dark. Forget about projecting anything. It's, you know, it's just not possible. Well, listen, we don't have to belabor this tonight.
Do, can I have like?
Yeah, yeah, Jane, Jane, I will come to you.
Okay.
After I'm exhausted with the council members. Please, please stand by. Ron?
So, uh, yeah, it, it makes sense to not do the hybrid meetings until we actually have the proper equipment to do that.
Yeah.
But I think, given the choice between in-person only or Zoom only. I, I would throw my uh, vote for the in-person only.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, oh, Gary, go ahead.
Um, just, just that, you know, obviously I would go along with everyone else and prefer. The in-person meetings just because of the, you know, there's a certain amount of uh, that human interaction that's lost. Via these Zoom meetings. This meeting in particular did seem to go very efficiently, um, and I appreciate that. Um, it, it, it seems that people tend to be more uh, concise and, and get their ideas across. Um, what my concern would be with is, is that um. If we do continue to go, you know, with, with, with just the Zoom meetings, um. Under the hope of getting the technology uh, challenges taken care of, that. That the in-person meetings would just get kind of, get lost and, and so I would want to be sure that um. Andrea and Amy um, continue to make a real effort to, to get whatever um, challenges. Uh, with the in-person meetings or the hybrid meetings rather, um, taken care of as soon as possible so that we could get back. To, to uh, to the hybrid meetings, um, because that, you know, that, that human interaction is important for me.
Okay, I, I'd also ask Amy, as Andrew just mentioned, other cities are going entirely virtual. Because they, they are finding it to be efficient and effective. Okay, Ron, do you have another point?
But just a quick question, we've, we've not had this before, uh, but how would a Zoom meeting work if we had? Uh, a meeting that turned out to be a, a large attendance of the public. But you know, like, like uh, the uh, use, usage permit. Uh, where we had a, a bunch of people, I'm not sure how that would work with the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, well, I've, I've observed the legislature do it with hundreds of people, so it's possible, but I think you're right, it could be challenging. Commissioner Brady, do you have your hand up?
Uh, um, tangential to this point, I've seen some small communities set up a structure. Where they have a standing work session prior to the city council meeting. And what that enables is for citizens to come and have that more free-flowing conversation. I have, apart from the very Robert Truitt structured part that begins later, so the. What I find is the people get their ideas and they get that interchange that you are also asking, you know, for that interpersonal contact. And then the city meeting can flow because people got their, their words in.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Jane, you get the last word, Jane. You there, Jane?
I think we're to unmute, we should be able to unmute.
Yeah, you're on mute, Jane.
See if I can do it here.
There, there you go, Jane.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know. The, the truth is that either of these options isn't going to include a community. There are many, many, many people that cannot, I mean, I actually have been trying to. Do remote and, or um, whatever, and I can't. And then I also treat many people that they're not going to be able to voice. Their concerns without an in-person option. So my question is. There must be, maybe we chat with Todd and we ask him to. You know, make sure that the, the internet capabilities can help the City of Moser. Do this, because the separate. Perspective of this or that is never going to include all the people that we, I think as a community, want to include. So we have to, I would urge that we do hybrid. Because some people just need to be in person. And some people can attend virtually. However, I tried, I've tried several. Meetings and three systems didn't work. So anyway, that's, that's my thoughts.
Okay, that, thanks, Jane. Well, how about this? We got some mixed thoughts on this. How about we do as suggested? Andrew and Amy, keep working towards solving the technical problem, the location, projection, bandwidth. You know, all of that to set up time, the professional time with a technician if that's needed, et cetera, et cetera. Um, in the meantime, until we get there, we, we do Zoom. You know, I, I just got to say.
May I say one thing that I, I actually, um, we could. Get donors to donate equipment and TV.
Would you, would you like to take that up, Jane? Would you like to volunteer and, and work that?
Yes, don't unmute me, yes. Delegate me something, please, I would take that over.
Great, thank you. And I was going to comment, since I've been on council for almost eight years now. I got to tell you, in-person attendance in this community is very, very, very minimal. Very minimal. The only time people show up is if there's something controversial, so. Let's, let's not kid ourselves, but that doesn't mean we don't try. We always want to get public involvement. We always want to provide the best opportunities for public involvement, absolutely, that's our job. But I'll just tell you, there's not a lot of participation in this community. Okay, Andrea, you got, you got.
Yeah, gotta get the word out there and they will.
Andrea, you, you got your way forward on this one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, Andrea, how, how about talk about uh. The Pacific Power outage coming up and then our council meeting on three September and anything else?
Okay, I've got uh, I've got a few updates here, a lot of wins. Um, the Pacific Power outage is going to be scheduled late August. I've really just received an initial email about it where. They do plan to, you know, they are redoing all of the lines um, to make them safer. And investing uh, ten million dollars in this system. Um, so, uh, as soon as I know more, it, it's going to be a, a ten to twelve hour outage. And I've, you know, asked about, you know, water system, um. In particular, and, and Chris didn't seem to think there would, that that would be a problem, um. Um, and all of you experts on, on the water as well, um, but, but we may want to think about um. You know, how we're going to inform our, our citizens and if there are any vulnerable people. Out there that need, you know, electricity or a generator that they're being taken care of.
Okay.
And, and Brenna, yeah, just waved her hand like hello. Uh, the sooner you know uh, the date of that, the better you can prepare for it. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hope, hopefully they're going to time it. I, I, I haven't looked that far in advance, but somebody at the gas station. Said that it's supposed to jump back up to a hundred in the next week, so hopefully they're planning that power outage. Around the weather patterns or can, we can advocate as a city that, you know.
Hey, goes without saying, thank you, Charlie. Yeah, okay, council meeting on three September, anything else?
Um, yeah, other things. I, I'd like to take this opportunity to just give the council an update of uh, some of the. Uh, projects that uh, we're working on and are, are coming to fruition. Um, one of those is the, the parking. Um, one of those is the, the parking study. Um, the parking study agreement is now um, ready to be signed. And due to the delay in getting it, uh, the timeline of it has, has shifted. You know, to our advantage to make sure that they're able to see um, the parking situation in the spring. So final date for that completion would be October, between June and October of 2026. The Willamette Partnership uh, group, which Colleen uh, connected me to also has come back with their proposal and uh, I don't know, this is an incredible resource uh, related to the transportation, the TMDL. They are going to support us in uh, holding two workshops and synthesizing feedback. You know, quite a bit of the requirements of that TMDL. Um, they're going to help us check off the boxes. They're going to create a roadmap document spreadsheet to and figure out what funding we have that is eligible for what costs timelines of projects. And I need help with the acronym, but where the CWSRF 1.5 mil will fill in and Colleen, can you help me with that acronym?
Yeah, that's the um, clean water. It's the clean water uh, funding from DEQ for the stormwater project. And so the stormwater project is twofold. One is a plan that we're finishing up by December 31st this year. That's what Jody's working on and I'm working on it just a little bit. Um, and they'll incorporate some of the projects that are already being built, like the Washington Street sidewalk. There'll be a design for that that's in the stormwater plan. But then after that, um, the city did apply for funding for implementation of larger stormwater projects and that's um, the CWSRF implementation funding and that is still waiting on underwriting from DEQ. Because our audits are not yet up to date and once our audits are up to date, they'll approve that funding.
Right. So the, um, right. So some of this is looking further into the future.
Correct.
But they are also going to develop a, um, a low impact development ordinance um, related to that stormwater system.
That's right, yeah.
And help us digitalize our GIS data and maps so that we have street datas for sewer, sewer, stormwater, drinking water and better coordinate projects. So just um, a, a lot of great things that are beginning, um, that will carry us into the next couple of years. And, and one more huge win, uh, we were um, notified uh, today that the, uh, the city of Moser was awarded the skate park grant. So congratulations on that.
Yay. Good job.
Yeah, right on. Congrats, Andrea.
And it will be October, uh, November before any, anything can be done. And next steps there is um, getting the application in for the site plan.
Wait, you know, by the response here, I think you guys must be skaters. You're really, you're excited.
Oh yeah. See this?
Anything else, Andrea?
Um, no, I think that's uh, that, that is quite a bit.
Yeah. You want to just touch three September?
All right. September 3rd is our, is our next, um, is our next meeting. And at this time, I, I don't have an agenda to, to, to discuss.
All right. Well, let's go around the horn. Any, any closing comments, counselors, Ron? Gary? Lydia? Charlie? Brenna?
I was just, I just was going to comment on uh, we're rocking and rolling with the Rock Creek passes again down at the market. It has been insane between yesterday and today. Uh, and we're darn near sold out of tokens again as of 5:00 PM tonight. That was last time I was in the market and I think we were down to maybe six tokens. So Amy, if you have anymore, I'll take them. Uh, but yeah, it's been, it's been crazy busy. So things are, things are moving, things are in action.
Hey, who, who goes down and collects the tokens out of the box? Is that you, Amy?
It's, it's been John, I believe. Um, and I think he put a key on the lockbox. Did I make that up? Um, anyways, it's been him, but I think we have access to it if we need it.
In theory, we shouldn't lose too many of those, but that's in theory, I guess only.
Yeah, that's been an ongoing battle because people like to buy multiple at a time. But then when he goes to collect them, there's very few in there. It doesn't match what we're selling with what should be in the box. So we're trying to at least sort of manage a little bit on how many we're selling to people at a time. So that we're not, you know, selling them handfuls and then only one or two are getting used. But it's, it's a tricky one because you know, it's the size of a quarter and they're easy to throw in your change jar or in your car. Um, so we're trying to manage it, but we're doing the best we can.
Brenna, Brenna, thanks to you and your team for dealing with this. Another.
And, and the cards, the cards will be getting sent according to a recent email.
Good, good. Okay. Hey, thank you all. Thank you, Mark, for attending. Jane's gone. Thank you. Colleen, thank you, Commissioner. Counselors, uh, this meeting is now adjourned. See you all.
Bye.
Good night, everyone. Night.
Congrats.
Thank you.